Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Carl Bastilles is the pastor at First Presbyterian Church. He'll lead us in a prayer, and then we'll have Councilman Gary Mars lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
As we approach Thanksgiving, it seems prudent to remember who we are and whose we are. I have two parts. First one minute excerpt from the 1789 Proclamation for Thanksgiving by George Washington. The second minute is a prayer written 150 years sooner and later put to music by Felix Mendelson. You may know it more by the song than the prayer, so don't bow your head yet. Whereas it is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly to implore His protection and favor. Now therefore I do recommend and assign Thursday next to be devoted by the people of these states to the service of that great and glorious being who is the beneficent author of all that is good, that is, that will be, that may then all unite in rendering unto Him our sincere and humble thanks for His kind care and protection of the people of this country previous to their becoming a nation, for the peaceful and rational manner in which we have been enabled to establish constitutions of government for our safety and happiness, and particularly the nation, the national one now lately instituted for the civil and religious liberties with which we are blessed, and for all the great and various favors which He has been pleased to confer upon us. Let us pray. Now thank we all our God with heart and hands and voices, who wondrous things has done in whom this world rejoices, who from our mother's arms has blessed us on our way, with countless gifts of love and still is ours today. Oh, may this bounteous God through all our life be near us, with ever joyful hearts and blessed peace to cheer us, and keep us still in grace, and guide us when perplexed, free us from all ills in this world and the next. All praise and thanks to God, the Father now be given, the Son and Him who reigns, with them in the highest heaven, the one eternal God whom earth and heaven adore, for thus it was, is now and ever shall be, evermore. Now unto the King eternal, immortal, invisible, the only wise God, be honor and glory forever and ever. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. There are a lot of organizations in Washington, and one of them puts together a list every year of the 100 best communities for young people, and we are nearly an annual recipient of that award. And we have a committee that has been working hard on this. I'll ask all of them to come up. Jill, Debbie, Jane, Debbie Blair, come on up. And Jane wears many hats working for the city. One of them is to remember how many times we've won this award. So Jane, how many times have we won?
We have won six times, Mayor.
That is awesome. Let's show our appreciation to this committee. And one of the challenges is, once you win, you have to come up with a new reason the next year as to why you should be one of the best communities for young people. And so every year it's a little bit of another conversation. What else are we doing in the community that might receive the attention of the United States? And we haven't had any shortage really. And so what did we come up with this year?
Well, this year we focused on a number of different programs. We've focused on childhood obesity initiatives and also some of the arts in schools and the academies that the public school district is doing to help students learn about actual professions that they could undertake once they get out of high school. So that was, those were a couple of the things that we focused on. And really, we still hit the high points every year in terms of our Maps for Kids program and some of the investments that the community has made in education, so.
Exciting times. And this comes with an award, too.
It does. It does. It came with a grant that we could give to a, that could be awarded to a youth-serving organization, and this year Infant Crisis Services will be receiving the grant. And they are a wonderful program, the Babies Food Bank in Oklahoma City.
And I believe it's a check for $2,500, and I'm sure they'll use accordingly. Thank you all for your work on this award, and on behalf of the citizens of Oklahoma City, pass along our appreciation, and let them know right away we're going to win number seven next year. All right. Let's show our appreciation again. Thank you all.
Thank you, Tom.
Good. We'll call the meeting to order and begin with a presentation from Roy Williams. Roy is the president of the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce and comes before the council on a quarterly basis to give us an update on projects that the council should know about from the chamber. You have handouts today.
Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, thank you again for asking me to come up here. Normally I kind of overview a number of things, but this time I sort of want to just focus on this handout that I'm giving you, so I'm not going to give you a roundup of activities. I want to tell you a little bit about this report. This is our annual business retention report we do every year, and it's based on interviews with the top 300 primary job employers over the course of the year. So it takes us about a year to interview these. And the results that are in there indicate really the stability of our economy and really where we see employment growth occurring. There are the jobs that form, these are the jobs that form really the core of our economy. They're critical to what we are able to see about the future. There's a lot of information in there. I'm not going to read the report to you, but there are some things in it that I do want to highlight because I think that they really tell the story. And that is that 59% of these companies that we interviewed expect to expand their employment in the next 12 months. That's up from 44% the previous year. So that's about a 15% improvement, which is pretty significant. And in fact, the results now are back where we saw them prior to the recession. So we're kind of back where we were when things were still relatively strong. And of these companies that we interviewed, these 351 of them, 51% actually expanded this past year, so they are in growth. And only 4% of those 300 had declines of employment in the last year. And these, 51% of these companies added 4,528 new primary jobs at an average salary of $63,000 per job. So these are truly quality jobs. The biggest growth in these jobs was in manufacturing and health services, followed by professional services, mining, and information technology. So really key areas of our economy. These same companies have projected growth that will add more than 4,000 new primary jobs. Think about primary jobs, too, because they really are the multiplier jobs. For every primary job you create, there's two to three secondary jobs. So these 4,000 jobs will represent somewhere around 12,000 to 15,000 new jobs just from these 300 companies. As you would guess, when you're going through these times, that low unemployment rates are the other side of the coin, and they're impacting these companies. They're telling us they're having difficulty finding workers, and there is also upward pressure on wages. The good thing is that the upward pressure on wages is really not disproportionate to what the national wage levels are. So we're not experiencing something that's kind of out of the norm. But nonetheless, it is challenging to our local employers. We're still seeing a hesitancy and a reluctance to grow, to make large capital investments in new employees and new equipment, particularly among the larger companies, the companies that are 100 or more employees. They're the ones who are more concerned about the economy, the federal budget, and they're indicating to us that's depressing their growth plans. And we see the same concern from the new projects that we're looking at in our business relocation and recruitment area, that they have that same hesitancy. In addition to understanding the plans to grow or retract, we also talk a great deal with them about the overall business climate, what their concerns are, what barriers to growth exist. And if you dig into the report, you see that not only workforce availability is an issue, there's a couple other concerns. One is the condition of infrastructure, roads, bridges. While many acknowledge and applaud what has already taken place, there's a recognition that there's been years of underfunding infrastructure in Oklahoma, that there's a huge task still facing us, and they're concerned about the current progress, whether or not there's the commitment out there to continue the infrastructure improvement statewide. Another area they're very concerned about is workers' compensation premiums. We've had some reforms in Oklahoma the last couple of years, but unfortunately those reforms are not working. We're continuing to see workers' comp rates go up, and companies are not seeing an improvement, and they're asking for more reforms. There's also concerns in the pre-K to 12 education system and the quality of graduates that they see coming out who are applying for jobs, that they really don't have the skill sets to enter the workforce. They also cite caution on a statewide base, on legislative base, about additional income tax reductions because they see this as potentially taking away resources that might need to go toward infrastructure. So all of these things help determine what our legislative agenda is, too. And a couple of other things they cite are immigration, healthcare legislation, and overall tax structure. But you can see all of that in there and actually gets into more depth. Switching gears, workforce issues, politics and economics, and how the chamber can be more aggressive and advocating for the needs of business were the main topics recently in a retreat we had down at Quartz Mountain. And we appreciate the attendance of Mayor Cornet, City Manager Jim Couch, Councilman Shadid, and Councilman Salyer, even though she's not here, she was down there. It was an event of about 140 individuals who spent about two days thinking about these issues and discussing them. The last thing I want to mention is a little bit of bragging. The annual conferences of the American Chamber of Commerce executives occurred this summer, as well as the annual conferences of the International Economic Development Council. Our chamber won four awards from ACCE. The chamber's new website won a gold award, which is the highest award that the organization gives. Our Oklahoma City image campaign and our monthly point newsletter won bronze awards. And we also won four awards at the International Economic Development Council. The image campaign there won the gold award, which is their highest award, while two of our economic development programs, one being the program you're looking at right now, that business retention program, as well as our site, our website called OKCEDIS, our Economic Development Information System, won silver awards. And then finally, our chamber chairman, Carl Edwards, won the institutional leadership award at the International Council of Economic Development. So that concludes my comments. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions? David?
Roy, may I ask you some questions on page 10 of the handout, the community strengths and weaknesses?
Let me.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think some of these are a combination of local and perhaps statewide concerns. For example, like transportation, would that be a statewide or is it here in Oklahoma City with respect to like the public transportation?
It tends to be their ability to distribute their goods and get their supplies in. So it has more to do with their product as opposed to employee needs and.
So that's more of the highways?
Highways, correct.
Okay.
It can be highways, it can be airports, it can be ports, everything it relates to either getting raw materials in, getting product back out.
Well, could you share some of the, if they did provide specific issues to, say, the city manager, and maybe we could look at some of the specific items?
We didn't break it out that way, but we could. I'll have my staff go back through the information and see if any of it is really very city-specific.
Okay. And the same way for like the infrastructure, I mean, I know we have issues with respect to resurfacing some of the roads and things like that.
Yeah, you know, sometimes I've mentioned streets if they happen to have one out in front of their business, but by and large, it's more the bigger infrastructure issues that they're concerned with.
Well, the issue that I think, I think we could have at least some input, although we're not involved with educating the public, but the education system and the workforce, you know, one of the concerns I think I have, just as a regular citizen, is the number of remedial college classes that students are required to take now once they do enter college, which is an indication that our public education system isn't preparing the students well enough for college just to step right in. And I would think it would impact the workforce development as well. So those of us who are on the education committee, if they could bring that issue up as far as preparing our students both for college to eliminate the number of remedial classes they have to take once they do reach college, or workforce development where they could step right into jobs, I think that's something we could at least provide some input on.
And that issue is a very high issue to existing employers, the difficulty of recruiting individuals locally who have the skill sets.
Well, and what I think is happening, too, there's a shift, there's a great need now for students with perhaps just an associate's degree as opposed to a full four-year degree program, that they can get great jobs starting out well above $50,000 and make an important contribution to our economy, so.
That's correct.
Well, thank you.
Roy. In reference to the workers' compensation issue, and I know for a fact for the last at least 15 years, this has been a repeated priority agenda in the legislature supposedly being driven from the business community as it relates to Oklahoma's workers' compensation laws. The laws have been changed numerous times, and again, every year, this becomes, you know, again, one of the issues that you all bring forth, saying that this is one of the top concerns. Are the businesses leaving Oklahoma or when you are recruiting businesses, is the issue that the workers' compensation laws in Oklahoma are not within some degree of fairness as it relates to businesses in comparison to other states? And those other states, are they getting the businesses that Oklahoma would have received because of what is, I sometimes look at as being accused of having a one-sided workers' compensation system, which I don't think is the case at all?
I don't know so much as it costs us jobs, but what we hear from companies who have a presence in multiple states, let's just say Oklahoma and Texas, is that their workers' compensation rates are significantly lower in Texas and that the benefits to injured employees are extremely higher. So the employees are better off and the companies are better off. That's what they repeatedly tell us. And most of them say it's, where you find that happening is where their workers' comp system is more an administrative system as opposed to a competing system, which we sort of have here, that pits employees against employers. And it's more of a legal battle than an administrative battle. And so employers continually tell us that when they are, have multiple presence, that our system costs more, it's more complex, it offers less benefit to injured workers, and that we don't seem to be making any progress. Like you said, for 15 years or more, we've been working on it. That's what they tell us.
Ed?
In looking at this list, I don't see anything about public health, and I'm just wondering, is that not a concern or was it asked or?
We ask open-ended, so if it's not on there, it's not a high priority to them.
Okay. It does seem like that there's a movement to try and develop wellness programs in corporations of all sizes. We're trying to develop one here for the city of Oklahoma City for 4,000 employees and we're going. It seems like a lot of companies, maybe besides the Chesapeake's and Devon's who have top quality programs, are trying to reinvent the wheel by developing their own wellness program. And I thought that was one of the most interesting things that came out of the retreat, and I'm wondering, is there a role for the chamber in trying to streamline all this, to have one liaison for companies that are smaller, medium-sized, or municipal governments that could go to the chamber? Somebody could help all these corporations develop wellness programs that are evidence-based?
Yeah, what we, what we believe sort of our role is to be that connector because we're not the service provider, but there are a lot of entities within the region who do that, everything from the Y's to the medical facilities. And so we look at ourselves as a conduit to connect them to that. And to your point, there are a lot of companies, large and small, doing it, and what the reason they're doing it is to drive down their health costs because they're seeing that as a significant cost to them and can actually see the real dollar bottom line savings by having internal wellness programs.
Just ask you about one specific issue. I know this Friday there are going to be strikes across the nation at Walmarts, including in Oklahoma. And I empathize with them to some degree. I've treated a lot as a physician, a lot of Walmart employees invariably, I don't find that they've been treated particularly well. They struggle to get full-time hours, they struggle to get health benefits. But beyond that, I guess I would ask you, we as a city seem to be struggling with food deserts, with trying to get grocery stores in certain areas. And Skip, for example, his ward is the size geographically of Las Vegas, but only has two grocery stores for its 75,000 citizens. I note that the city of Edmond is resisting a fourth Walmart going into the city. And I'm wondering, at the retreat, one business leader indicated to me that 60% of all the food bought in the greater metro areas bought at a Walmart. And I'm wondering if we've reached a critical mass where the impossibility of competing with those economies of scale is making it difficult for local businesses to compete or even to be established in areas with food deserts like in Ward 7?
That's hard to answer, but I think what's going on in our market is growth in that area. We have new out-of-market grocery stores looking at our market right now. You know, we've had Whole Foods, we have the new small market going into the Flatiron District. And I think as you, as you see the economic opportunities like that, we're going to continue. I don't believe that Walmart is suppressing the market like that and keeping people out because there's so many different products now and there's so many different markets that Walmart can't serve because their, their market strategy is built to a certain market. But now there's a lot of smaller markets and different markets, and I think you're going to see more of the specialty ones come in, smaller stores, and perhaps the opportunity for the food deserts is getting better to be addressed than what it's ever been. But still, those companies will tell you everything that drives their decisions are demographics and economics. And if the demographics and economics are not there, they're not coming. They got to stay in business. And we have done study after study of areas trying to entice retailers into them, and they will, and usually the reason they don't is because the numbers aren't there according to their models.
I know you can't pick sides, but what, how would you respond to the contention that if we as consumers, especially in a city like Oklahoma City that's dependent on its sales tax for its general fund, if we as consumers shop in local businesses, that that money stays and recirculates over and over in the Oklahoma City economy as opposed to leaving the city and state and going to a corporation like Walmart that's 50% of the stock is still owned by one family?
It makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
A lot of communities have shop local programs, and it's for that purpose.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Your Honor, it's not a question for Roy, but really for us and our legislative committee. Would including an issue such as workers' comp reform be an appropriate subject to have with respect to our legislative agenda?
It certainly could be. We've had it on there in a support issue in the past. I don't recall if it was on this year or not.
I mean, it just doesn't make sense that Oklahoma provides less benefits for injured employees, but at the same time has higher insurance rates. If I was an employer and had a choice between two locations, one of them had that kind of scenario and one didn't, I would be inclined to go to the other location. And if we're concerned with growth to increase the density of the city, which helps in a lot of matters, anything we could do to improve the business climate, I think, would be beneficial for the city. So I would think it would be an important issue to add to our own legislative agenda.
I'd be happy to take that to the legislative committee. Roy, are you familiar with any specific legislation that's been filed this year?
No. But I do know it's at the top of the list of the Tulsa Chamber, the State Chamber, and our chamber.
I think it's a support issue on our list.
I thought it was, too, but I.
All right. Roy, thanks very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I have an appointment on item 3B for the Board of Adjustment. Cast your votes, passed unanimously. And then an amended appointment on 3C for the Port Authority. Cast your votes, passed unanimously. At this time, I'd like to move up item 8E after a request has been made. This is to hold the turkey trot on Friday. Is anyone here representing this event? Yeah, come on up. Bruce, we'll need your name and address for the record.
I'm Bruce Holmes. I'm a Oklahoma City citizen, 6017 Mason's Drive.
All right, and we're going to be running for Eagle Ridge Institute this Friday.
13th year, it's 13th year that we've had it annually, and we're excited about it. This year we've added another venue to it, and we actually are partnering with Special Olympians. We're going to have a fun day after the race, and the race, we moved the venue downtown, actually starting in front of the Marriott Gardens. We'll run around what will soon be the park, Oklahoma City Park. Hopefully, I will actually spend about a mile along the River Park and then come back and finish at Marriott Gardens. And at that time, we'll have a fun day with Special Olympians, we'll have clowns down there, and a lot of events with balloons and face painting and races and small races for the kids, so.
Sounds like fun. Where should people gather on Friday?
In front of Botanical Tube.
Okay. And what time should they gather?
Our first race will be at 8 o'clock. We'll have a fun run with the kids, the Special Olympians, and then we'll actually have a one-mile fun run down to the flycatcher and back. And then the actual 5K will be around the edges of the park and back into the Marriott Gardens.
Well, that's a great event. All right, so the Oklahoma City Skydance Bridge is a destination.
The flyca, yeah, yeah. It actually, for the one mile, we're going to just go down there, look at it, and come back.
Okay. Cast your votes, passed unanimously.
I would like to say one other thing, Nick, too. You know, you don't really realize until you, until you put one of these on, how many people you talk to the city and how many different avenues are involved in something like this. And I have met more really good people with putting this on this year than I've ever been involved with, and I really, really appreciate all the, just every single person I talked to. And I know the city employees get a lot of heat a lot of times, but they. one-mile fun run down to the Flycatcher and back, and then the actual 5K will be around the edges of the park and back into the Marriott Gardens.
Well, that's great of that. All right, so the Oklahoma City Skydance Bridge is a destination.
The Flyca, yeah, yeah, it actually, for the one mile, we're going to just go down there, look at it, and come back.
Okay. Cast your votes, passed unanimously.
I would like to say one other thing, Nick, too. You know, you don't really realize until you put one of these on, how many people you talk to the city, and how many different avenues are involved in something like this, and I have met more really good people with putting this on this year than I've ever been involved with, and I really, really appreciate all the, just every single person I talked to, and I know the city employees get a lot of heat a lot of times, but they were really great people to work with, so appreciate it.
Appreciate that, thanks.
Mayor, Mr. Holmes was on, he's an original member of the MAPS-1 Oversight Committee and spent 11 years steering the MAPS-1 project, so we thank you, we thank you for your service in that endeavor.
Absolutely.
Your honor, a shameless commercial, if you all will turn into Channel 20, you'll see Bruce talking about the Turkey Trot on Channel 20 this month on the Ward 3 Show, and it is a worthy endeavor, and it's been in practice now with 13 years, the Turkey Trot, and it's a great way to spend Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving.
Great, thanks again, Bruce. All right, we're on the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for November 13, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for November 6. No comments or questions on the Journal? Cast your votes, passed unanimously, and item 5 is request for uncontested continuances.
I have none this morning outside of item 8C, which is listed.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? Well, let's resess the council meeting, convene as Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority where there are five items. Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously. Well, adjourn the OC-MFA, convene as Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, just the claims and payroll today. Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC-PPA, convene as Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, and again, it's just claims and payroll. Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT, reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations?
Your honor, 6M is in Montreal, and 6S is in Sierra.
Okay.
Mayor 6J.
T is in Tom.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Pat, why don't you go ahead and get started with M?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item M relates to a CY traffic program we're putting in, and I wonder if we might get a presentation on that sometime, bring us up to date. It's a fairly expensive item, and I would like to see some kind of a cost-benefit explanation that would appeal to our citizens, that they're getting value for their money in this particular area.
Is this using the Wi-Fi to coordinate the lights?
Yes.
Okay.
Time the traffic signals together to make them more efficient and hopefully reduce transit times.
All right, and Pat, you wanted to talk about item S as well?
Item S is an interesting item, it has to do with some equipment that's going to be in the Devon Tower to assist the fire department. I wonder what kind of equipment it is, and the second thing, I wondered if this is going to be a requirement for all high-rise buildings, and if it is, do we have that in an ordinance yet, or are we considering it?
This is not a requirement, this is volunteered by Devon to put this in, and so they chose to do this, and we're accepting that, and I believe it's mostly some hoses and some air-breathing apparatus, so they've got some tanks and such that are in that level, but hopefully Chief Bryant can come in and provide some more specifics on it.
If it's valuable in a high-rise like the Devon Tower, and it sounds like it is valuable equipment, shouldn't we consider making it a requirement to put in some of the other high-rise buildings?
I'll let the fire chief, who's much more qualified to answer that question than I am. Chief, the first question is, is what type of equipment is in the Devon Tower, and the second question is, if it's, if we should do that in the Devon Tower, is that something that we should require in other significant buildings?
Well, not necessarily. The equipment that they are wanting to donate is basically hose and nozzles, so they would have them stored in various locations throughout the building, and basically what that would do is keep our firefighters from having to bring that equipment in with them, so it's just a convenience for our firefighters, it's something that they wanted to do throughout the construction of the building. We've been working with them very closely on certain fire safety features of the building, obviously code compliance, and it's just been a good working relationship, and I think that's something that they thought would not only be helpful to our firefighters, so that they had that equipment there and staged in various locations throughout the building, but it's just something that they wanted to do in that regard. So as far as the question goes, should we require that in other high-rises? Well, again, it'd be nice, it's not a code requirement, obviously, and we certainly have that equipment on our apparatus that we would take in, in the event of a fire.
Chief, is there any plans to periodically look at that equipment, make sure it's in working order and the right equipment's there?
Yes, sir, I mean, we've discussed that with them, and the equipment that they ordered is obviously compatible with our equipment, and obviously compatible with the fire safety features and the stand pipes and things like that in the structure, so it's something that they've consulted with, it's prior to them ordering it.
So you characterize this as more a convenience than a necessity?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Skip, item J.
Yes, this is a serious flooding problem that existed northeast 51st and Terry. When it rains, it's impossible for the residents to maneuver through their neighborhood, and Eric has been working with me diligently to try to find a solution to this problem, and I'm grateful that the city and all the staff in his department and in the other departments that have made the many site views of this area, and I believe we now have a solution to the problem. Is this the last easement, Eric, that you, that we need, or that your office need?
There's actually one more easement that we're working on now, but the plans are complete, so as soon as we get that final easement, we'll be able to begin the work.
Okay, all right, well, I can assure you that the citizens that live in the area, and especially Ms. LaGrange, mother, Mr. and Mrs. Miles, and the other neighbors that have been affected by this flooding that exists there will be very, very grateful to your staff, and I thank you for all the help that you have given in reference to trying to rectify this problem. Thank you.
And Ed on item T.
This is a relatively small contract for architectural services with GSB to help us with our RFP, and I got to hear their presentation at the Transit Subcommittee last week, and I took from that, you know, our senior wellness, we're struggling to find a partner, we are becoming behind in our timeline because we had no satisfactory responses to our first RFP, and so I guess what I would ask, what I'm hoping for is some flexibility in the way that this RFP is designed in terms of scope and size. Some of the things I took from them, they seemed to challenge some of our assumptions that we originally made, number one, that you can do this without a subsidy, number two, that you're kind of at a disadvantage if you don't have a Department of Senior Affairs in place before you do this, and Skip has taught me this in places like Albuquerque, et cetera, but third, that there's really no, there's no evidence-based reason why you would need to do four senior wellness centers as opposed to two. There's no study or evidence that would advocate four $12.5 million centers as opposed to two $25 million centers. So as we're having difficulty finding partners, I would hope that this RFP would allow the flexibility in terms of scope and size for someone to potentially come up with a concept that involves a larger facility, maybe one that has, that some of that capital can decrease O&amp;M expenditures over the long term, but allow GSB to incorporate that as well. And my understanding is that the new RFP will say that we can entertain any scope and size, is that right?
Councilman, we're still looking through that and working with those people, the lifespan people that you mentioned, and also with the Subcommittee, but that's something that we can, we're certainly entertaining. We're going to make the RFP as flexible as we can, like you suggested, and there's lots of issues that we're still working through.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have a comment about that also. I agree with Councilman Shadid about the, when we think back on how we got to, we originally talked about four or five, when we think back to how we got to that, we just kind of pulled those numbers out of the air in terms of, in terms of there wasn't any background study at all to document that, to make sure that's what we needed. I think, given what we've run into, as he said, with regard to looking for partners, I think the idea of going to two is a much better idea. You probably need to put them in dramatically different areas of the city, you couldn't put them too close together, but I think you could put one, I've got a couple suggestions, but if it's going out for an RFP, probably they'll let them, other people ought to figure that out better than me, but I think, I can visualize two. I would also like to look into whether or not if we, if somebody comes back and we think one could be built, say, for 40 million, I mean, the two could be built for 40, so instead of 12.5, they're dividing up 40. If perhaps some of the money might be put into a fund, I understand that it probably could not be utilized for the purpose of O&amp;M, but it might be put into a fund to offset future capital expenses, since I think the bonds were capital bonds, and we might, that might be an additional inducement if the proposers knew that there wasn't going to have to be serious capital expenditures on end of the future, and I think that that's probably possible. I know that O&amp;M's not possible, but...
The maintenance is possible. It specifically provides in the ordinance for maintenance.
Well, that might be a way to do it, is to shorten it down to the point, a little bit, build two, and put funds aside to somehow offset. I do not think that at this point we ought to, I personally think it was a mistake to include even the possibility that we would subsidize them, because I think once you say we're going to, we potentially will subsidize them, they're going to ask for a subsidy. I don't think there's any question about it, nobody's going to sharpen their pencil beyond what they think they can get to help them operate it, and I just, I think that should have been the absolute last resort, but that...
Let's wait for the RFP and see what we get. Let's wait for the RFP and see what we get.
But I do think that I would encourage people to propose a larger facility in one portion of town, not more than, not taking more than half of the funds, because I can see two of them, both of them are located on city-owned property and two separate quadrants that have very high need based on the health outcomes reports that we have. I just think we need to be flexible, because we want to, it's a project we want to do. It was something the public was in favor of, I think, very heavily when we did the MAPS-3, and I think we owe it to them to try to do the best job we can to put two of them on the ground at least.
Yeah, Larry?
Well, we did, in all the planning for the MAPS-3 initiative with respect to the adult wellness centers, talk about splitting them up among the four quadrants of the city, and I think it's premature to render any comments that we should go this way or that way until we get the information in, because I think most of our citizens are expecting the four centers to be spread around the city, and I think you're talking about last resorts, along with a subsidy, that should be a last resort and not be really promoted right now.
All right, any other comments on the consent docket?
Just a question on this particular project, why did we appoint a testing laboratory?
Bring in David for that.
Councilman, it's just pretty much standard procedure whenever we do these contracts, because it is an architectural contract that we just went ahead and assigned them, because this contract will be amended to go on into the architectural contract with GSB to actually do the architecture for the first wellness center.
That's just the contract, yes, at this point. The contract we approved today, the total work we approved today, only includes our advice and assistance if you'll be stretching it.
That's true, yes, sir.
Could I ask just one question then? Are we going forward with just a total vision of this issue of being an absolute 100% senior when that's defined, wellness center?
That's some of the things that the Subcommittee's been discussing, and that's one reason why we brought lifespan on, but I believe that the way it's moving is, it will be just a senior center, there won't be daycare or anything like that in there.
Daycare?
Well, I'm just saying, if you were talking about something other than seniors, and that's been mentioned in the past.
Well, what I was really, multi-use of a facility, I want to just throw this out. I think we need to be careful, if you go and look at all of the fitness facilities in Oklahoma City at lunchtime to 4:00, and see what the demographics, the age, the gender that are in those facilities, and we have some great facilities in this city that we could get a very, very good benchmark guide, and I think we're going to be sitting with a lot of buildings that are just going to be empty most of the day if we don't create some multi-use of those facilities. It's, I mean, you go out to the White House, they got three basketball courts, they got tennis courts, they got swimming pools, they got fitness from every degree that you could ask for, and you can clearly get a pretty good gauge as to when people are using it, the age. You go over to OU, you see the same thing. You go to the Y, you see the same thing, and I just think that we may need to look at some multi-generational use of these facilities to get the full use in return for it.
That'll be part of what we're just talking about, the flexibility with RFP, if, say, one of the universities says they want to do it in conjunction with their operations or whatever, we'll review that and bring it to you. There's, I think, an infinite amount of possibilities still at this point.
All right, any other comments on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously. Just one item on the concurrence docket today, any comments about 7A? Do we have a second? All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously. Move on to item eight, these are items that require a separate vote. The first is a zoning case in Ward 7. It's an ABC issue at 1,000 Northeast 63rd Street. Skip?
I haven't received any protests, I think this is a little restaurant that is trying to make it at 63rd and Kelly. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Well, just let me ask a question. Is this the restaurant at 63rd and Kelly?
Yes.
Yeah, I had dinner there not too long ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we took the youth council there, so I have no problems, we haven't received any calls on this at all, and so thank you for your endeavor. And...
Okay, we'll have a motion in a second, we're voting on item 8A1. Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 3. It's at 3201 North Richland Road. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up? This item was passed unanimously by the Planning Commission. The applicant is here if the council has any questions, if not, I would move for approval.
Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8B is to close a private drainage easement in Ward 4. Pete, you okay with this?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, make a motion then. Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8C has been deferred until November 27. Item 8D is up for final hearing today, and this is defining a price agreement, and it comes to us from our purchasing department, I think the council's been briefed on this. Any comments or questions before we vote?
Move.
All right, cast your votes on 8D, passed unanimously. Item AE passed at the beginning of our meeting, we're on item 8F, and this is our ASME contract. Comments or questions here?
Move.
All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8G is a resolution which gives our non-union employees, where it's applicable, to match the benefits given to the ASME employees.
Move.
All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously. Appreciate staff's work on the ASME contract this year, went smoothly again. Item 8H would modify the urban renewal plan in anticipation of the train station.
Train station, Stanface Station, correct.
All right, ready to go on this?
Move.
Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8I, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Cast your votes on item 8I. Do we have a motion on that? Okay? Cast your votes. Cast your votes, and it passes. Item eight, J, understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Seven.
Okay, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item eight, K, understand we do not need executive session?
No.
Okay, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item eight, L, understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Strike.
Cast your votes and strike it. Pass unanimously. Item eight, M, is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight, M? Claims recommended for denial. All right, how about a motion then?
Move.
Cast your votes, and those claims are denied. Move to item nine. These are claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under claims recommended for approval?
Move.
Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. I will note the three people left in the audience today are friends of mine from New Jersey, the Alpern family, visiting here. Ed worked here with me at Channel Five thirty-some-odd years ago, and they are back for a visit, and I've been getting the tour for the last three days. And apparently their tour includes a city council meeting, so their son Josh can justify getting out of class. [laughing]. Well, as fast as Mick has gotten through this morning, would you come back ever so often? Items from council. Pat, you want to get us started?
Yes.
All right, Skip?
Yes.
David?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I do want to express my appreciation to Chief City and Assistant Chief Jester. We met last week. In Ward five, we have I-240, and along with that, we have some apartment complexes that are rather large and unfortunately have kind of gotten old. They were built back in the early 60s. And unfortunately, they've not been, you know, updated, and as a result, there's been some incidents of crime incurred in those complexes. So they developed a plan to meet with the five complexes, the onsite managers, to work with them in an effort to help reduce the incidence of crime in those complexes, and hopefully will be successful with respect to that. And those items include such things as improving the lighting, improving, upgrading the fencing around the complexes, improving the doors and locks on the apartments themselves, and a few other things. And unfortunately, these types of apartment complexes give all apartment complexes a bad name, and there's very, there's quite a few that are very secure and don't have problems. But unfortunately, there's a stigmatism with apartment complexes, and they're not all bad, but the ones that are an area where crime does occur, we're trying to work with them to reduce that. So I appreciate the police department's efforts in that regard, and we're looking forward to those results. Thank you.
Thanks, David. I am gonna need to depart for a funeral, so I'm gonna ask the Vice Mayor to come over and finish out the meeting. Pete, you want to continue with items from council?
Welcome the OCCC students that are here today to observe us. Journalism students from Oklahoma City Community College are up in press box upstairs, so I know what a great job OCCC's doing, and I appreciate the fact that we're able to work something with them so they can come and observe us today.
Okay. That it? Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank the folks at River Park and Windsor Forest for the hospitality showed my wife and I last week at their neighborhood meetings, and encourage the folks in Meridian Hills to attend their neighborhood meeting tonight. And then yesterday, I had the privilege of observing a great project that the fire department put on under Chapel and Ted Wilson. They gave out over 600 coats to all the kids at the Windsor Hills Elementary School. They had to recruit class out to help out. There were retired firefighters there plus current firefighters, and it was just amazing to see the faces on those kids light up when all the recruits marched in. Our firefighters are held in highest esteem by young people, and that's a very gratifying situation. So if you pass along, Jim, to the chief, my thanks for what they did. This was the fourth, I believe, school that they had been to. There were three in the Oklahoma City School District where they handed out free coats, and one in the Putnam City District where Windsor Hills was. Thank you, Your Honor.
They've been doing that for a number of years, the Coach for Kids projects. It's really interesting, gratifying to see what happens with the kids when they give those things out. Ed?
I want to ask Rick Kane a couple of questions, but before I do that, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and invite everyone to a service tonight. It's at the St. Charles Boromero Catholic Church. For about eighty years, there's been an interfaith Thanksgiving service. It's all, many, about roughly ten different religious groups will get together, and it rotates each year, goes to a different religious institution. This year, it's at, again, the St. Charles Boromero Catholic Church on 50th Street between MacArthur and Ann Arbor. The best religious service I've been to, it's the best of Oklahoma City, it's the best of Oklahoma City's people. It is just, it's very uplifting, and I just, if you have an hour tonight, you know, gratitude is the emotion that basically every religion is trying to maximize. So it makes sense that they would all come together at Thanksgiving and emphasize gratitude. And it's a really, it's an hour, very well spent, seven to eight p.m. tonight. Rick, can I ask you a question? Because we talked last week a little bit about the intermodal hub. And I'm, just looking at this Google map, just to get oriented, kind of in the center at the top, there's, it's getting cut off, but there's a little picture of a train up there. That's the Santa Fe station, correct?
Yes.
That's what we're talking about buying from the Brewer family.
Correct.
And then the tracks are kind of running through the middle of this picture. And then the U-Haul, the new boulevard would be at the very bottom of the picture, the U-Haul is there right above that, and then there's that very large parking lot to the east of the railroad tracks.
Yes.
And then there's a sliver of land to the west of the railroad tracks, between EK Gaylord and the railroad tracks. So I want to ask you first about that sliver to the west of the railroad tracks.
And we're talking about south of Reno in this case?
South of Reno. So that, when I look at the intermodal hub study, there's really nothing being done with that. And my understanding is that's owned by the city of Oklahoma City?
It is.
Leased to the Brewers?
No, if it's south of Reno, it's not leased to the Brewers now. COTPA has an agreement to provide parking on that in partnership with the city. The Brewers no longer have that lot.
Okay.
They have the lot, they have that stretch of parking space north of Reno.
So we could do, I mean, we could do a variety of things with that land.
Well, currently, we can. The question is, and I'm not really the best one to answer exactly how it's going to change, but as you talk about the boulevard design, it's just to the south, it's going to change the dimensions, or it's going to change the level of Gaylord as it comes through there. And my understanding is, access to that lot will be somehow compromised. Now, how significantly? I'm not the best person to ask that question.
Well, it would have access to Reno, and then it could go...
We would still have access to Reno, but the southern half of that lot could change somewhat. Again, I don't know all the specifics on that, and I still think that's part of the design process.
Did we explore that as a site for the Greyhound bus?
No, we did not. At least, I don't believe that Jacobs did, in part because of just the, I mean, we've gone over there and looked at it ourselves from the standpoint of whether we could get good bus flow through that area. We did not envision from our operation that we could. I can't tell you how much Jacobs talked to Greyhound in terms of their operating requirements.
We talked internally whether that would be a viable site or not.
Okay.
Just the pros and cons of it.
And what do you, what do you think?
What's that?
And what was the conclusion?
Well, a couple of things. One is, there's no structure on it for any buildings for any, anything. It's pretty small, and it has access issues, it's got boulevard issues, and then pulling the buses in and out, into, with the traffic right there, in and out of Reno, it's gonna be, it would be a tight maneuver right at the lights. You could pull them in right at the lights there in the intersection, it'd be tight. There were some challenges with it, but it's, you know, and in the future, it may have some possibilities, especially if there is a, if they could use that and maybe use the Santa Fe station for the ticketing and food services and that type of amenities down the road, it may have some possibilities.
Okay, well, let me ask you about the large parking lot there, because the intermodal hub study, that's where, that's where it envisioned putting the inner-city buses.
Yes, that's correct.
So that is, that's owned by Randy Hogan as part of...
I don't know that Randy Hogan owns that. I think Randy Hogan has a development agreement on that site.
For a parking garage?
Yes.
Well, he's got surface rights, and he's got a first right of refu, I think, I can't remember if he or we own, renewal owns that, if the city owns it. Randy has the surface rights at this point in time, and he has first right of refusal for a structured parking garage. That's, I'm going off of memory on that, but I think that's correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand, because the intermodal hub study recommends a parking garage right there, with the first floor being for inner-city buses like Greyhound, and then a parking garage above it. So if we were to decide that that's what we wanted, because our state of policy right now is that intermodal hub study, and he didn't want to do a parking garage, then we would have the right to do that?
I think that's right.
Okay. Can you go to the next one? I just want to show, this is the intermodal hub study, and I don't, this is just a rendering of what is envisioned there, and then, so it's, I can't really, it's roughly 600 spaces, correct?
Actually, the projection was 850 spaces, 853, I think, being exact. It was approximately 14,000 square feet for the Greyhound facility itself, with the allowance for, I believe it was up to eight bus bays.
So where are we, Rick, I mean, in terms of, we've passed as a body, the intermodal hub study, we've got this lot, we, as a policy, we've said we want to put the inner-city buses here and have a parking garage, and is, where are we in the process?
Specifically about the parking garage element of it?
Yes.
You know, looking at the hub study, part of the analysis that was done was to identify, do we need a parking garage? And when you look at the numbers in the parking garage, they took into three considerations. One, that there's some small level of support for commuter rail, which would be the Edmund-Norman Midwest City Tinker connections to the multimodal hub. The numbers are approximately 60 spaces, if I remember correctly, that was committed for the commuter rail element. The second one was Amtrak, and currently, we do have Amtrak that goes into that station. They were envisioning perhaps a more, what do I want to say, aggressive Amtrak on the possibility that it goes to Kansas. So they had projected about 170 spaces, I believe, for parking demand as related to Amtrak. And then the final piece, which was the big one, which was 580 spaces somewhere along that line, was related to commute, high-speed rail. And so what was really driving the parking garage was that high-speed rail component. Without that, you had an element of just over 200 spaces that maybe you would need in parking. And so, again, this was the full-blown development concept, trying to make sure that we had space in Santa Fe Station, or we had adjacent property that we could grow to if we were going to have our most complete and most comprehensive intermodal hub site.
You're looking at parking garage development north of Maine?
That's one site that's, that's being talked about right now, is possibility of development.
And how would that impact the need for parking garage here? How would it impact our intermodal hub?
I think it, I think it could blend with the intermodal hub. I mean, we've not really talked with the developers there, but clearly, it's in close approximation to the, to the site, and so I think it could work. I mean, the challenge, COTPA looked at this site as a possibility of building a garage just to address the current parking demand downtown. In talking with building owners and leasing agents, this was not a site that was deemed to be one of their favorites, and it's primarily because you've got some real site issues. I mean, part of it is, you're willing to walk a little further if you can see where you're going, but we've got the Cox Convention Center site right in the middle of the core of downtown and this particular parking lot. So we know from experience, if you're going to build a parking garage, and it's going to be primarily an event-driven garage, it's going to be difficult to make a cash flow. And obviously, we have a real need downtown right now for parking to satisfy the daytime, not only transient parkers, but the monthly parkers. And as we see backfilling of office space, as Devin has vacated, there's going to be increased pressure on that. Also trying to look forward to support future economic development in the downtown area. So in trying to assess what is the most preferred parking location, this was not one that ranked high, although it was, it was identified in the parking study that COTPA had done. It was not one of the first choices from our perspective.
I see, my fear, Rick, is that if you built one north of Maine, that that would become the parking garage for the transit. For the car, I think it makes sense. You're closer to the central business district, and you're closer to places of employment, and you could connect to the Santa Fe garage. So from an auto-centric paradigm, it makes sense. From a transit paradigm, it's farther to walk for those transit riders. So this parking garage south of Reno would seemingly make more sense. And so I guess my fear is that the one north of Maine might supplant this, might be in place of it. And so I just want to express that, that fear. I also want to just ask, you, of all the departments, I think you have the most challenging, I mean, we give you such contradictory objectives. We ask you to increase ridership on buses, and we ask you to increase coverage, which are diametrically the opposite. We ask you to maximize parking, which is basically for the automobile, and then we ask you to think about transit concerns. And so I know Pete has brought this up in the, in the past. I wonder if there's utility in separating those two functions, the parking function and the transit function. And it, my understanding is that we have maybe a small window because of the absence of debt. The absence of debt would allow us potentially to amend the trust indenture and not have to get the permission of creditors, and to potentially, in this small window over the next few months, divide parking and transit into two separate trusts or two separate entities. Is that...
Yes. I spoke with Craig Keith and Marcia Harrod yesterday, and we have no parking debt right now.
That's correct.
So this would be a window for you to amend the trust indenture and just make that trust a transportation and have another trust that did parking.
When does that window close?
Well, that, I mean, from, from the standpoint of debt, that window would close at the point in time that COTPA took on new debt. It's anticipated that we will be selling bonds probably in February of 2013 to finance the new garage that we've talked about. Now, one of the other considerations, and this is really a question for the attorneys more than me, but in my conversations with them, we did talk about the fact of recognizing that this is a time in which we have the ability to modify our trust indenture, and there's more to it than just separating the parties. I mean, there's some other elements that are more operational, particularly in some of the bidding restrictions that currently exist. So we're making a review of the trust indenture to see what changes we'd like to make. And part of that change would not necessarily force a complete separation at this point, but at least the incorporation of language that would allow us to separate the trust in the future, should that need arise. I mean, one of the things that I personally looked at, now, I'm not speaking for the trust, I'm speaking for myself, was that we've had a lot of discussion about a regional transit authority. At the point that we adopt that and move forward, and I'm in a positive vein that that's going to happen, that would be the time in which we would certainly want to separate the parking, or I believe we would want to separate the parking and the transit from each other. I'm not sure, in my own mind, I don't see the benefit currently in separating the two. I don't know what's to be gained by that. I will speak from my perspective, that we've got a trust that's very committed to both entities. I think there is a balance that takes place. We certainly look for opportunities to have the two complement each other. I understand the argument that they do seem to have conflicting goals. Clearly, it's not our, I mean, we could raise the parking rates to try to drive people to the, to the bus system, but I'm not sure that that benefits the downtown area at all in terms of our economic development opportunities that we're trying to do. I mean, you clearly understand the problems that we have on the transit side, and so attracting riders is always going to be a challenge for us to do that. I'm not sure that separating the two immediately benefits us in that much, but I think it is important for us to take an opportunity, if we have it, to at least incorporate in a trust indenture the future availability of being able to separate the two.
Let me interject something. That's exactly what we do at the airport trust years ago, back in the late 80s. That's exactly what we did with the airport trust years ago, back in the late eighties. That's exactly what we did. We made the provision that in the future, at some point in time, we could add a trustee. At that point, we had a lot of debt at the airport. There were only two trustees. One was the city manager and the other was an appointee of then the First National Bank. And we made a provision that in future debt, as we issued future debt, we reserved the right to add trustees. And took five, five-
How long?
It was about 15 years.
It took 15 years to get all the debt out of the way to do it. But at that time, we just, when we issued bonds, it's not a pure analogy, but when we issued new bonds, we reserved the right in the new debt to at some point in time add that third trustee. And Larry serves in that position now. But, so I think it's wise to do that. I think it would be very, although I would disagree with you to some extent, I think the schizophrenia of having parking and bus system in the same organization just troubles me to the point where I would be willing to change it if you could make it just a wash and we could change it. But I don't think it's wise to try to do it between now and February. I mean, that just would make no sense. We don't have time to really listen to your side of that and listen to all the other ramifications of it. But I do think, going forward with the idea that we change the indenture to the point, while we have the opportunity, that we could, if we through some thorough study determined that was the best thing to do, then we could do it. In the past, it's been, it's been exercise in futility to talk about it because there was no opportunity. We couldn't do it if we wanted to.
So now that the debt has paid off, we do have that opportunity, and I think we're going to reserve that option for us in the future in the new trust indenture. And we can have this discussion about combined or separately as a part of the budget as we go into it next year. And there is not a cut answer on that. First of all, we haven't done any staffwork research on it, you know, adding another department as opposed to the schizophrenic philosophy or whatever. That's, you know, that's a-
I've talked to Rick often enough that I don't understand what I'm talking about.
That's right.
It's hard to hold in your head that one side, we're going to try to talk people out of driving their car and ride a bus. On the other side, we're going to try to make it easier for the market.
Pete?
I mean, that's it. I mean, it just, even if it works, it's weird.
Councilman Shadid, I misspoke earlier about the ownership of the compressed lot. I'll then advise that actually Hogan does own that. Kathy, can you clarify the ownership and what rights that Urban Renewal of the city has for parking redevelopment?
Sure. The compressed lot is, was under an agreement with the Bricktown Parking Investors to provide parking in the Bricktown area to coincide with the opening of the ballpark. So this agreement dates back to the mid to late 90s. Mr. Hogan has that parking lot as he is the remaining Bricktown Parking Investor. He bought out all of his partners and he now has sole ownership of that lot. The Urban Renewal Authority has an agreement that reserves a parking easement for that piece of property. So if the city were to declare a need for public parking in the Bricktown area for a structured parking garage, Mr. Hogan would have the first right of refusal to build that parking garage himself. If he chose not to do that, then the Urban Renewal Authority, along with the city, would have the opportunity to build a structured parking facility on that location.
So I just want to clarify for you what the actual rank was. There's still the first right of refusal, but it's a little bit different than I characterized earlier.
Would that include the ability to put interstate buses on the bottom floor of it?
It does not have that language in the agreement. I mean, this agreement was entered into 15 years ago, and at least 15 years ago, and it wasn't envisioned that an inner-city bus facility would be needed at that location. What was envisioned was that we would need structured parking to support the development of Bricktown. So that's the only right that the city has reserved on that piece of property. That doesn't mean that we couldn't negotiate with Mr. Hogan and have discussions about it, but as far as a strong legal right, the only one we have is for structured parking. And there's a lot of restrictions and requirements that go along with that, too.
So how did we get this far? I mean, did Jacobs talk to Mr. Hogan? How did Jacobs come up with a study that envisions inner-city buses there entering and exiting off of Reno and then the city council voting for it as our state of policy?
Well, I can't tell you whether they talked to Mr. Hogan or not. Excuse me. You know, my understanding is, when they were just identifying surrounding properties that would be candidates for potentially building a parking garage, that that was a site that they preferred. And especially when the discussion came about trying to bring as many different uses of transit in one location to connect there, that the concept of potentially building a garage on top of a Greyhound station made sense to them. So it was offered as a, you know, as a possibility. I cannot tell you specifically whether they talked to Mr. Hogan or not.
Well, the answer is, is a number of their sites were not under public control and we have the right, if that's the chosen place to go, and it's a reasonable place to put it, we can condemn and make that facility happen.
That's not unusual for studies to identify best locations irregardless of the ownership of the property.
Fire stations.
Right.
I understand that, but I guess I'm asking for clarification. We could condemn that and have a parking facility that had interstate buses or buses on the first floor?
We'll have Mr. Jordan answer that one.
Probably. I think we have the right, the city has the right of condemnation, I believe, to, for parking purposes, but I'd have to look and verify that. Since Urban Renewal has an agreement with Mr. Hogan, they might have a hard time condemning it themselves, but the city might be able to. Let me verify that before you go with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Thanks, Rick.
City Manager reports. We have a presentation?
We do. A few weeks ago, maybe even a month or so ago, there was an article that outlined some of the most dangerous intersections in Oklahoma City. And I can't remember, one of the councilmen, maybe Mr. Ryan, asked if we could do some follow-up on that and take a look individually at those intersections. So Mr. Winger is going to do that this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Manager and Council. And as we get ready to load this PowerPoint for you. The article that's in question, I think most of you will remember it from the Oklahoma, and it was actually published in late September. And the title of that was "The Worst Intersections in Oklahoma City." It also had some language about being the most dangerous. And so as I bring this information to you, you know, I'm going to give a little bit of credits where they're due. Stuart Chai, I think most of you are familiar with, did a lot of the research on this, the city's traffic engineer and his staff with Richard McCubbin, and of course J.C. Reese with my department, and Lee Holland who we have here today, helped us put this together to hopefully respond to some of the questions and concerns that might have come up. But when we look at the article, this is the excerpt of the map that was included in there, and you'll see that there's 10 locations with a total number of crashes as they're listed on the drawing. Seven of the 10 locations are on Northwest Expressway, west of Hefner Parkway, which is also State Highway 3. It's actually a highway. It is city-managed. We manage the intersections at those locations. But as a matter of fact, it's actually not a city street in Oklahoma City. I think one of the things that we also wanted to clarify when we talk about these crashes is that you look at the numbers are from January of 2009 through July of 2012. So we're looking at three and a half years of data here, and so when you look at the numbers, just kind of keep that in perspective as well. In the office, we have access to a lot of the police reports, the accident reports, and I think as you find a lot of the incidents that are occurring, some of them are very hard to blame on the intersection themselves. Obviously, intersections in some of the cases, especially on Northwest Expressway, are quite large, they're quite complicated. In some cases, when you read these police reports, you've got admission of guilt on the driver's part that they just weren't paying attention. Or you have maybe a passenger that said, "I told the driver the light was red when they entered into the intersection." I mean, some of these things are really driver or motorist error. These aren't things that the intersections are causing. But as we go through this, there are some challenging intersections in the city, and these are 10 of those. And as you recall, we have over 700 signalized intersections, and so we continue to monitor those very closely. We take citizen calls regularly. We adjust timing on our signals. There's just a lot of things that we've been able to do in the recent years with the intelligent traffic systems that we talked about today on council and expanding that project that allows us to enhance lights. We also have the opportunities for LED lighting being added with the old incandescent bulbs, the new LED lighting. We've been able to install in over 30 intersections across the city. The light is more visible, it's more maintenance-free, so we don't have as many bulb outs or burnouts and such. And so I'm going to go through each of these intersections. I think most of you are very familiar with these. Our number-one intersection, Oklahoma City, that causes the most concern, it also has the most number of reported incidents in this time period, is Northwest Expressway and Belle Isle Boulevard. This is where you'll find Penn Square Mall in the upper left-hand portion of this. This is Northwest Expressway running east and west. You've got Interstate 44 running north and south of major streets that you see there. Frequently what occurs is you've got off-ramp traffic from Interstate 44, I think most of us are familiar, headed westbound. There's a concrete barrier that actually separates two lanes of traffic. And as much as we've added signage, as much as we have not allowed a right-hand turn for those that are on Northwest Expressway going to Belle Isle Boulevard, and that's the road headed straight up the middle of the page, motorists are choosing to make an illegal right-hand turn where there's just a huge number of incidents occurring at that location. When you look at the total number, 40% of the accidents in this intersection are incurring on westbound motorists only. So that's just looking at the westbound traffic through the intersection, 40% of the incidents that are occurring there are at that location. If we break down the data, and I've got this for each of the intersections, and I'll spend the most time on the first to try to get you formatted with what you're looking at. You'll see the number of collisions in 2009 at 86, 10, 64, 11, 58. And in this year, through the month of June, this is six months of data, there's been 29 collisions at that intersection. But we've made several improvements, and these are recent. We've upgraded the signal heads to LED lighting. We've added some eastbound signals. We've added westbound signal head with Arrow. This is to address some of the more recent reports and crashes that we've experienced there. We've also replaced the antiquated, the older traffic controller with a new ITS controller. We've also replaced many of the mast arm signs. These are the warning signs that might tell you to not right turn. These are the other signs, just to make sure that the reflective material is updated and they're very easy to read. So you're going to find similar instances in the other nine intersections as I go through these. Northwest Expressway and Rockwell, again, seven of the 10 locations are on Northwest Expressway. So these are high-volume intersections. To give you ideas, most of these are 50,000 cars through the intersection and greater. Not all, but the majority of these are very high-volume intersections. Northwest Expressway and Rockwell, you're going to see similar information. Again, this is State Highway 3. This is the breakdown of the collisions by year. And again, but we've done significant upgrades at these intersections. This also has LED lights. The controller has been replaced. The mast arm and signs have also been replaced. This is Northwest Expressway in Portland. Again, as we break down the data by the years, you'll see that in 2009, I mean, we had a low collision report, but then it jumped into the 40s in 2010 and 2011. But again, LED lighting, traffic controller replacement, mast arm sign replacements. This is Northwest Expressway, Northwest 63rd. Obviously, this is one of the largest intersections in the city when you look at it in area. Quite complicated, double left-hand turns westbound. You'll see the number of collisions again here. I think these are pretty consistent as we go through the intersections. But again, as I mentioned earlier, we do have the reports, we do study the police reports, monitor those, and if we find a means to make the adjustments, we were doing so prior to the writing of the article. It's something that traffic engineering continually manages. And if we have improvements that can be made with restricting lanes, putting something different on the mast arms to make it more safe, we're doing so. This is Northwest Expressway and Lake Hefner Parkway, and the reason for the orange or the yellow circle is to show you that it's that particular intersection on the east side. This would be on the Baptist Hospital side. Again, the breakdown of the incidents, and again, similar upgrades. So we moved to number six, Northwest Expressway in Pennsylvania. Again, a breakdown of the collision incidents. You'll see here, we've actually done some additional improvements. You'll see the westbound right turn lane was added. So in some instances, we're actually adding new lanes to address some of the concerns and some of the problems that we're experiencing. This is one of those that's actually not on Northwest Expressway, and there's three of these. This is 39th Street Expressway in Meridian. You'll see the number of collisions is slightly less than what we're seeing on Northwest Expressway, but again, the volume actually starts to decrease on some of the city arterial streets like this one. This actually is still 64,000 cars a day through this particular intersection. The major upgrade that we've done is we've added the new ITS controller at this location. This is North MacArthur and Reno Avenue. Again, you'll see the collision report, and this is one of those cases with the replaced controller. We're actually able to change some of the signal timings. So in a lot of cases, we can update the timing. If we're finding that maybe a light is not green long enough, cars are racing through on a yellow light, we can sometimes open up that green light a little bit longer to allow safe passage of cars. We also have the opportunity to enforce or enhance what we call the all-red. Most may not know, but there is a period of time in intersections where all the lights are red for safety. We don't go straight from green to red in the opposite direction. It's not a millisecond change. And so you're going to hear about terms like all reds. And so the larger the intersection, particularly Northwest Expressway and 63rd, we may have all-red times that are much longer than others to make sure that the cars are clearing the intersection before the next light turns green. So just realize that this is a daily management for the city of Oklahoma City. We continue to monitor each and all these intersections. This is Southwestern and Southwest 59th. Again, collision reports. Some of the things that we find on our city arterials is that a lot of the intersection accidents are not actually in the intersection. They're reported for the intersection, but they might be driveway accidents. These would be, it could be the 7-Eleven. It could be the auto maintenance store where somebody's pulling out of the driveway in the vicinity of the intersection, and it's actually a driveway accident, but it gets reported with the intersection. So just realize, when we look at the data, a lot of these, if it can be attributed to the intersection, it is, but in a lot of cases, when you read the police reports, when you read the traffic incident reports, it kind of sheds a lot more light on the situation. We replaced the controller at this location. And then the last item of the top 10 list, this is the west side of Hefner Parkway and Northwest Expressway. So we showed you the east side, it was also on the list as well. Collision report, and similar to the other improvements that we've done along Northwest Expressway, LED lights, replacement of the controller, and mast arm signs. As we look into the future, this wouldn't apply just to these 10. This would be all intersections across Oklahoma City as we continue and with your approval today, look to expanding the city's ITS, the Intelligent Traffic System controllers. This will help us with signal timings and opportunities at all intersections. We're looking at additional LED replacements for two reasons. One, they're more visible than the older incandescent lights, but they're also maintenance-free in most cases. They burn a lot longer before replacement. New mast arm signs to be installed. The sun does fade our signage. It does go on to a replacement plan. There's a lot of signs in the city that don't show up as well at night, and so those new mast arm signs will assist that. We've got new dedicated turn lanes to be provided. We're practical. Obviously, the cost goes up considerably when we start making pavement changes, but in some cases, and just like I showed on one of the 10 intersections, that's sometimes the best course of action. And then we're also talking about additional design coordination and an emphasis on access management. So as we look at new developments in Oklahoma City and they're proximity to intersections, we can work very closely with planning to make sure that those driveways are being located safely, safe distances from the intersections, and that at least we're looking ahead to what the future impacts will be on intersections across the city. So with that, obviously, we take news articles like this one very seriously. We do put that into our system and we track and monitor these. These 10 were not surprises. We were very well aware of these. So I bring that with you today to let you know that we're continuing to do upgrades and improvements, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
I guess I'm struck, number one, I guess I shouldn't be. I mean, it's consistent with our autocentricity that when the newspaper does an article and we react, that when we describe something as a worst intersection, we're talking about automobile crashes, and we don't talk about pedestrians hit by cars, or we don't talk about bicyclists hit by cars. And I guess I would ask that if we're identifying what's the worst intersection, that we start to collect some data on where pedestrians are getting hit by automobiles. And I think, one, you're likely to find this Northwest Expressway in Independence by Baptist Hospital. People are trying to get across that huge intersection, all the workers at Baptist trying to get across the street to work. But in terms of fatalities, I mean, a pedestrian struck by an automobile is going to, is obviously going to be more likely to be seriously injured or killed than in a car accident. And so I'd ask that we start to collect that data and identify the 10, if you want to limit it, the 10 most dangerous intersections for bicyclists and pedestrians. Second, can you help me understand, I know that part of Northwest Expressway is under city control, part of it's under ODOT control. Where is that demarcation?
East of Hefner Parkway is under city control. West of Hefner Parkway is State Highway Three under state control. But we still manage the intersections, but it is a state highway.
But we're responsible for the intersections even where it's ODOT?
But not the physical improvements to the street. So, I think that's where the line is drawn, is it's a city, it's a state highway, the city managed, but east of the parkway, it's completely the city's.
Okay.
So, we run the signals, the timing and those type of things, but if there's capital improvements that need to be done to the intersections on that west portion, then ODOT does that.
Right. For a while, I think you've done everything you can do. I mean, you've done every kind of signage. We just had a fatality where someone pulled into and hit a motorcyclist and killed him. And yet, I came and spoke to you last week, or somebody just did it in front of me. I mean, they just won't stop the illegal right-hand turns. So, at what point do you say, "There's no right-hand turns here anymore? We're just going to, we're just going to not have right-hand turns into the Bellisle area?"
You know, I think when you look at the history of that particular intersection, there's been a number of improvements made. Years ago, the concrete median didn't exist because they were having a lot of accidents there. And that, again, the forty percent of the accidents that are occurring are in westbound-only traffic. So, I think as we continue to study this, we come up with new improvements. Obviously, this one would have to be strictly coordinated with ODOT, but if you look at Interstate 44, there's actually two off-ramps from Interstate 44 that access Northwest Expressway. The first is labeled on the highway, class and boulevard, but you actually get to Northwest Expressway from that same exit. Perhaps the next step we might choose to take is have to be coordinated closely with ODOT, and I'd have to say also the local area businesses, and we need to make sure everybody's on board, is proposing the closure of that ramp that's causing so much concern and maybe emphasizing that first ramp and re-signing that is not just a class and exit, but also a Northwest Expressway exit. That's a very, very preliminary. But I would tell you that we continue to look at every option. I mean, so as we look to improve safety, I would tell you everything's on the table. And as we kind of walk through those issues, maybe it's not possible, but that's something I think that we want to explore. Additional signage, you know, maybe there's something that we've missed. Maybe there's something else we can do. We've talked about pavement paint. Maybe if we actually put markings on the pavement and it's not just a sign, maybe that will be more readily seen by motorists. But frankly, I still think that we just have folks that choose to make that right turn. They believe the coast is clear. They're making that turning. You've got some traffic coming off the interstate at a higher rate of speed that they're just missing. As you know, the curves are pretty sharp right there if you're exiting Interstate 44. They're not seeing that vehicle or that motorcycle on the case, and they're having accidents right there in that right-hand lane.
I mean, is there signage that's more aggressive, that this is a high-risk intersection? Do not turn right?
You know, I think we can keep signing. I think enforcement's also a possibility. Again, I think there's a list of things that we can continue to monitor and make changes. And I don't think this is one we walk away from. Definitely not.
Just a technical question. On the city's ITS system, when the bus system gets its GPS tracking online at the end of the year, can you interface with the ITS system so that you allow the buses to get a green light, so that the buses get to travel faster?
You know, we've talked about that, at least from a police and fire safety standpoint, that there is the capabilities for public safety to do that. I would imagine that it's possible to do that with trains or buses as well. We haven't explored that fully, but I would say, yes, it's very possible. We could do it through the software.
Thank you.
Eric, are these ten intersections in the report, are the same ones that appear in the newspaper?
That, I'm sorry, that...
Are the ten intersections that are in this report, are they the same intersections that the city labeled as most dangerous?
You know, I don't know that we labeled them as the most dangerous. I mean, they definitely are the top ten that have the highest accidents. So, if you're looking at it from an accident rate, these are the highest accident intersections in the city.
Does our list match the city's list?
I don't know that we have the same list. I mean, we have more intersections that we're monitoring than just these ten.
Thank you.
On, I don't know that I'm real happy that four of the ten are in Ward One, but on Northwest Expressway and Rockwell specifically, ODOT recently lengthened the left turn lanes for east and westbound both. The eastbound left turn lane to north on Rockwell is still not long enough. That line backs up and clogs up two lanes of traffic every day. And I believe there's still some room left. They could lengthen that. Would we get something to them, encouraging them to look at lengthening that again?
I will do that.
Yeah. It's quite a, both of them could be lengthened, but the eastbound to northbound is the one that's the most critical, I believe. Any other questions?
Some may view that as a sign of prosperity in Ward One and four of the intersections.
I'm going to call it that rather than poor drivers in Ward One. I'll just, I'll leave it at that. Any other questions, Eric? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Anything else on items from council, or City Manager reports, I'm sorry?